outlined in the application and will be summarized in board motions. A variance is a request that seeks permission to do something the ordinance does not permit. Variances also have five points of law to be met, different from those for special exceptions. Per the City of Nashua bylaws and State of New Hampshire revised statutes, a minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to approve any application. In addition, the board will hear all scheduled cases if a quorum of three voting board members is present at this meeting. Any citizen has the right to contest the decision that this board makes. Should we make a decision that you believe is an error, you have the right to request a rehearing. A written rehearing request must be received by the City of Nashua Planning Department within thirty calendar days from the date of decision. Should this board not grant a hearing request, you can file an appeal directly to the New Hampshire Superior Court. Please contact Mr. Falk of the Planning Department for more information. For the meeting, we have the following full board members in attendance. Myself, Mary Ellen McKay as chair, Mr. Steve Lionel, who is our vice chair, Mr. Jack Carrier, who is on Zoom, and Mr. J. P. Boucher. We also have the following alternate members in attendance. Mr. J. Minkara and Mr. Nick Kanakis. In addition to the board members, we also have with us Mr. Carter Falk, our deputy planning manager, and Ms. Kate Poirier, our zoning coordinator. We will start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. For board members participating by Zoom, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you, which is required under the right-to-know law, and state your reason for not attending in person. Alternates may fully participate in discussions, but will vote only if a full board member recuses themselves or if there are fewer than five full board members in attendance. I'm going to take a roll at this point in time. Mr. Steve Lionel. Mr. J. P. Boucher.
Present.
Mr. J. Minkara.
Present.
Mr. Nick Kanakis.
Present.
Mr. Jack Carrier.
I'm present on Zoom, and I'm on Zoom because I'm on pre-planned trip away from Nashua this evening.
Thank you, and I am Mary Ellen McKay, and I am also present. Tonight, because we have four regular members and two alternates, we will alternate between Mr. Kanakis and Mr. Minkara for each case. The first case, Mr. Kanakis will be the voting member. And I will read the first case into the record. Oh, pardon me, I want to introduce Mr. Carter Falk and Ms. Kate Poirier, who are also with us. Do we have any changes to the agenda other than the corrected agenda we received?
Yes, from the amended agenda, case number two at 33 Fairmount Street will not be on tonight, it will be on the June 14, 2022 meeting instead.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Case number one. Sarah G. Marshall owner, Joseph Landry, Build Savvy LLC applicant, 6 Carter Circle, Sheet B, Lot 2155, requesting special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 3, to remove a 10-foot-by-20-foot one-story addition and construct a 24.8-foot-by-28-foot attached garage with accessory in-law dwelling unit above on right side of house. This is in the R9 zone and it's Ward 9. Is there somebody here to present this case? Is there anyone on Zoom?
Yes, good evening, we're coming through Zoom.
Okay, if you would please state your name and address for the record. And remember that you are being recorded, and so it is paramount that we are able to hear you.
Yes, my name is Alec Marshall, and I am living at 6 Carter Circle, Nashua, New Hampshire.
Gabriella Ma, living at 6 Carter Circle, Nashua, New Hampshire.
Thank you, the floor is yours. You have fifteen minutes to present your case.
So, we are looking for a special exception to remove our current 10-by-20-foot addition and replace it with an accessory dwelling unit with the garage below. We're hoping to do this so that my mom can live in the accessory dwelling unit as it was formerly her home and the home that I grew up in. So, we're hoping that we can keep the whole family together, keep her close as she gets older, and have her have her own space private from the rest of the house.
We have brought this to the attention of all of our neighbors. We haven't heard back from all of them, but those that we've heard from, we're fully on board with our proposal and excited to see the work that we can do in the area.
Does that summarize what you want the board to hear? I know you did give us blueprints, but if you could maybe go over the size, most especially of the ADU. And is it an ADU or is it in-law?
Well, no, that's the same thing.
Same thing.
So, it was summarized to us that it would technically be an accessory dwelling unit due to the fact that it would have its own kitchen and bathroom and be separate from the main house. So, it would be its own apartment, but would be an in-law suite essentially. It is 24-foot-by-28-foot, and the actual living space upstairs in the in-law would be 672 square feet.
So, the reasoning why we wanted it to be an actual accessory dwelling unit was because we knew that we wanted our own separate spaces so that we could make this work long-term in order so that his mom can really live on her own and fully function in her own space, and we can grow up and, you know, grow our family in our house without restricting, you know, her living.
And the other reason would be that you and both applicants are going to be living on the premises, correct? So, it would be owner occupied?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Falk, do you happen to have all of the points for an ADU that we could check with the applicants on? Because we don't seem to have it. Do I have that in the book? Yeah, just those points. Were they given these points by any chance? Okay. That's right, okay, I'm sorry. Where, when you applied, were you given the points? Should be the six points? Nine, that's what I thought, but there's only six here.
Yeah, they're missing, missing three of them. It seems to be incomplete.
Excuse our technical difficulties.
No problem.
It won't be in the statutes.
It won't be?
This is old, this is from 2008.
Oh, okay. You don't need my sheet. I went to say nine and I saw six. For the city, the covenant? Yeah, well, I couldn't see that.
Why not?
Well, because it's, you know, eight hundred feet away, no.
Well, can you put it up on this one? Can you turn around and read it? Yeah, that's.
I don't think so. It's not.
Seven fifty.
Well, Cam.
Oh, 2017, yeah? That should. School bound.
It is.
Oh, okay, four is reserved, so that's. You click on the, the cookie, cookie. Grab your microphone.
It's really awkward.
Okay.
No, I can't see the applicants at this point. All I'm going to do is ask you to respond in the affirmative or the negative to each one of these points. The accessory dwelling unit shall be clearly incidental and subordinate in extent, use, and purpose to the primary structure and does not exceed 750 square feet.
Yes.
Yes.
The accessory dwelling unit shall be the only accessory dwelling unit within or on the same lot as the single-family dwelling.
Yes.
The accessory dwelling unit shall not alter the single-family character or appearance of the single-family dwelling or its conformity with the character of the neighborhood.
Yes.
Yes.
No new entrance or exit to an accessory dwelling unit shall be constructed on the front or frontage side of the single-family dwelling. No new curb cut from the street shall be constructed, and the exterior design of the accessory dwelling unit shall be compatible with the single-family dwelling through architectural use of building forms, scale, and construction materials.
Yes.
The owner of the property must occupy. Kate, can you go up a little bit with this now? Thank you. Okay, the owner of the property must occupy either the primary or accessory dwelling unit as the owner's principal place of residence.
Yes.
The owner of the property shall provide the City of Nashua with a covenant for the filing with the Hillsborough County Registry of Deeds, along with the appropriate filing fees. The covenant shall read substantially as follows. And were you given this covenant, and if you were not, I would ask that you re-refer back to Mr. Carter Falk or Ms. Kate Poirier so that you can get a copy of this.
Madam Chair, this would come after the meeting.
Okay. One additional off-street parking space is required above the minimum standard for a single-family house?
Yes.
And you will give the City of Nashua a covenant, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. An interior door shall be provided between the primary dwelling unit and the accessory dwelling unit?
Yes.
And the single-family dwelling and the accessory dwelling unit shall not be separated in ownership, including by condominium ownership?
Yes.
An accessory dwelling unit shall only be associated with single-family detached dwellings and shall not be associated with manufactured housing as defined in RSA 674:31.
Yes.
Is that basically the summary of what you would like to present? Because then I would like to ask any member of the board if they have any questions.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Then I'll now turn to the board. Does anyone have any questions for the applicants? Seeing none, I will ask if there is anyone present. Oh, Mr. Carter, a Mr. Carrier. Did you have a question? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none, is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to speak in favor of this application? I don't see any, Kate. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak with questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application? I don't see any. Is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to speak with any questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application? I don't see any. Therefore, I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Lionel.
I have no comments, I'm in support of the application.
Thank you. Mr. Carrier.
I'm in support of the application, I think it meets all the criteria. I appreciate the applicants having an architectural drawing because to me, it shows that they've thought it through and how they're going to work with a slight topography of the land. Again, it meets all the criteria, so I'm, I'm in support of it.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher.
I'm also in support of the application.
Mr. Kanakis.
I'm also in support.
Mr. Minkara.
I'm in support as well.
And Mary Ellen McKay, myself, I am also in support. Is there somebody here who would care to make a motion? And Mr. Kanakis, I did state you were the voting member, correct?
Yes.
I'm just making sure of myself at this point. Thank you, Mr. Boucher.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the special exception for Sarah G. Marshall owner, Joseph Landry, Build Savvy LLC applicant, 6 Carter Circle, Sheet B, Lot 2155, requesting a special exception for Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 3, to remove a 10-by-20 one-story addition and construct a 24-foot-8-inch-by-28-feet attached garage with accessory in-law dwelling unit above on the right side of the house. It's in the R9 zone, Ward 9. We find that it is listed in the table of uses. We find it will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impaired pedestrian safety. We find it will not overload public water drainage or sewer or other municipal systems. We find that the special regulations are fulfilled, the nine points in the ADU special regulations are fulfilled by testimony of the applicant. We find it will not impair the integrity or be out of character with the neighborhood or be detrimental to the health, morals, or welfare of the residents. So, again, I make a motion to approve the special exception.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Lionel, for your second. Mr. Lionel, how do you vote?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
Mr. Kanakis, how do you vote?
I vote in favor.
Mr. Carrier, how do you vote?
Mr. Carrier votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
And myself, Mary Ellen McKay, I also vote in favor. Congratulations, your application for a special exception has been approved. As we stated earlier, any person has the right to appeal a decision that this board makes. They have up to thirty days with which to do so. Please re-refer back to Mr. Carter Falk or Ms. Kate Poirier, and they will help you with any questions or comments and also about the covenant so that you can see what that actually looks like. But thank you for your presentation this evening.
Remember, we're skipping two. Yeah, okay, that's right.
Okay, we'll move on to case number, technically number three on our agenda. Scup Realty LLC owner. Belsetti Pianos LLC applicant, 323 Daniel Webster Highway, Sheet A, Lot 384, requesting variance from Land Use Code Section 190-108(c)(2) to exceed maximum all sign area, seventy-five square feet allowed.
Be sorry about that, Madam Chair, it should be Ridge Road going first and then.
Oh, okay.
Must not have made it to the.
No, it, it's, this case is listed as the next case for us.
Yeah. Sheet must be missing for some reason.
Oh. So, we're totally missing. Yeah, we're totally missing, okay.
Yeah, because it says case three.
Yeah, it does. Okay, folks, I apologize, we're going to rewind here. And we're going to go to.
We just read it from the agenda.
I'm going to read it from the agenda. I just want to make sure I pick up the right application. Okay, let's try this over again. Case number three. Joseph M. Conway III owner, 70 Ridge Road, Sheet C, Lot 191, requesting variance from Land Use Code Section 190-264 for accessory use area. Forty percent allowed, eighty-five percent proposed to construct a 24-by-30 detached garage. This is in the R4 zone, Ward 5. Is there somebody here to present this case? Please come up to the podium, the mic. State your name and address for the record, please.
Joseph Conway, I reside at 70 Ridge Road.
Joseph, you have up to fifteen minutes to present your case.
All right, so I have gone around to all my neighbors, and I actually have a signed document with everybody in agreement with building my 24-by-30.
Could you please hand that to Mr. Kanakis on the end so that he could? Do you have copies of that? Or did you just have the one copy?
I have one more copy, one more packet.
If you need something to read from.
No, I have, I have another one. Everything that is in that packet was also attached to my application because that also covers everybody that surrounds me that sees my property and that neighbors my property has no issues, and they have signed with phone numbers and email addresses. I don't see it being a out-of-this-world request for a two-car garage. If you look at the square footage of my house, I have a relatively, well, I have an extremely small house, which is 932 square feet. Which is the only real reason why the variance is coming into effect because I also have a lot that can accommodate it at a half acre. If you go through that packet that I showed you, there is a printout of the color and design of the structure. It is going to be blue with a black roof, which matches the house. And if you go to the next sheet, it should be titled Garages of Ridge Road. And these are similar structures that are on my street or neighboring my property. And I also threw in there a couple before-and-after pictures of when I bought the residence and the current state of the residence. And I'm just, I have two registered vehicles with the State of New Hampshire. I just want a place to be able to store them indoors. I also have two watercraft that are registered with the State of New Hampshire that I would also like to be able to store indoors. That is the main reasoning for having a garage. And that's, that's my case.
Does anyone have any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak with comments, questions, concerns, or opposition to this application? Is there anyone on Zoom who has any comments, questions, concerns, or opposition to this application? I see none, therefore, I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting.
You can have a seat, sir.
You may have a seat, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Carrier.
In summary, I'm in support of the application. I would say when I first, you know, we first got the agenda, I thought, wow, this is like, looks like a big request. This is going to look out of place in the neighborhood. Of course, doing a site walk, you know, it always means so much. And I concur with the applicant that it's a small house on a big lot and pretty much, which is why he's here. I mean, if he had a good-sized house or a normal-sized house, perhaps for an R40 lot, there'd probably be no need, or if this were attached. I was still concerned about, you know, especially the abutting neighbor, that it might be, you know, a large and impeding maybe on the privacy. But I appreciate the applicant having spoken with the neighbors and neighbors showing support. And because I think they know the neighborhood best and with, especially with that support, I think it meets the criteria, and I'm in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher.
I'm also in favor of the application. Again, as stated, the applicant's only here because of the percentage, because of the size of lot and the home size. But other than that, I have no issues with this application.
Mr. Minkara, and in this case, Mr. Minkara, you will be the voting member.
I also support the application. Again, as been said, the only reason they're here, you know, he's here is because of the size of the house. When you look at the percentage of lot coverage, it certainly wouldn't exceed what is common in the neighborhood. The size of the structure itself is also not excessive, consistent with what you're seeing in the houses all around. So, I support the application.
Mr. Kanakis.
I'm also in support for the reasons already stated.
Mr. Lionel.
And I am also in support for the reasons already stated.
And I.
And I will also echo my fellow members of the board, and say I also am in support for the reasons that have been already mentioned.
Is there someone who would care to make a motion? Mr. Boucher.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the area variance for Joseph M. Conway III, owner of 70 Ridge Road, Sheet C, Lot 191, requesting a variance from land use code Section 190-264 for the accessory use area, 40% allowed, 85% proposed, to construct a 24-foot-by-34, 30-foot detached garage, it's in the R40 Zone Ward 5. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. Again, the only reason it's here is because he has a larger lot, almost a half an acre, and a smaller house, and again, that's the only reason why he's here, because of that percentage calculation. Other than that, the structure does fit in to the neighborhood. We find that the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue, other than the variance. We find that it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We find it would not adversely affect property values of surrounding parcels. We find it's not contrary to public interest, and we find that substantial justice will be served. So again, I make a motion to approve the area variance.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Minkara. Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in, Mr. Courier votes in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Minkara, how do you vote?
Mr. Minkara votes in favor.
Mr. Lionel, how do you vote?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
And myself, Mariel McKay, I also vote in favor. That is a five-to-nothing vote. Your variance has been granted. As we've stated earlier, any member of the public has a right to challenge any decision made by this board. They have 30 days with which to do so, and should you have any questions, comments, concerns, need any information, please re-refer back to either Mr. Carter Falk or Ms. Kate Poirier in the Planning Department. And, again, thank you for your application, and congratulations. Scup Realty LLC owner, Falsetti Pianos LLC applicant, 323 Daniel Webster Highway, Sheet A, Lot 384, requesting variance from land use code Section 190-18(c)(2) to exceed maximum wall sign area, 75 square feet allowed, 104 square feet proposed, HB Zone Ward 7. Is there someone here to present this application? And, Mr. Knakis, you will be the voting member on this case.
Thank you. My name is Tony Falsetti, I'm the owner of Falsetti Pianos, and my address is 5 Carnoustie Circle, Bloomfield, Connecticut. So, we, at our retail space here, we want to increase the square footage of the business, external signage allowed, from 75 square feet to 104 square feet. This building's a very unique retail space, in that the only entrance to the showroom is in the back parking lot. Based on the literal enforcement of the ordinance, we would only have enough square footage for a reasonable-sized sign on the front of the building, the street side, and nothing on the back, where we are proposing an increase in square footage to allow a simple logo sign above the entrance, not street side of the building, with the primary focus being a directional sign to show the showroom entrance. In addition, it will provide directions to the patrons of the plaza. Due to the confusing nature of the parking lot, we have three to five customers per week who enter our showroom thinking they're entering Jordan's Furniture, which is next to us. Also, aesthetically, it will match what is currently on the property on the other tenant that currently occupies that property. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant? This board is very quiet tonight. Is there anybody here, present, who would like to speak in favor of this applicant? Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here with any comments, questions, concerns, or opposition to this application? Is there anybody on Zoom with any questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to the application? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting, and thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Boucher.
I'm in support of the application. For the main reason is, again, you know, we, I, well, I have, I know we have, but I have, you know, we have history with that piece of property, so we've seen that develop over, you know, the last years. The extra signage that they're looking for, I think, is minor in the respect that the signage that, you know, the overage, or I look at the overage, it's in the, like, back of the building, right? So I think it just, it serves the purpose only of, as the applicant says, a directional sign into the showroom, but I think it's not obtrusive or any other form of over signage to the general public in this respect. So, again, I think it's, I'm just simply in favor of the application.
Thank you. Mr. Minkara.
I also support the application. I think pretty clearly, signage on the front of the building needs to be maintained so that you can identify where the business is located on otherwise, you know, a very busy street, and from the rear of the property, I think signage, additional signage is necessary to clearly define the business itself and distinguish it from the other business on the property. And to Mr. Boucher's point, it really is fairly an obtrusive in terms of the signage itself, so I support the application.
Thank you. Mr. Knakis.
I'm also in support. Usually with the signs, we have the issues of them being too big, bright, and distracting, and this is none of those. It's a simple sign to give some guidance to customers coming in the back, so I'm in support.
Thank you. Mr. Lionel.
I'm also in support, I'm gonna be honest and say, I did not know that business was there. I drove by, I drive by there quite often, and I just, it was just a blank above the doors, I did not know what it was, but now I will. So I support the application.
Thank you. Mr. Courier.
I'm in support also, like Mr. Boucher, I, you know, we've had lots of requests in this area, and also on this building, but this is very different. When I first got, you know, first looked at the address, I'm like, again, you know, another request from the same one, but this is really different. It does not, as Mr. Boucher said, add, like, to the sign clutter that is on Daniel Webster Highway, and it's not loud and bright, like Mr. Knakis says, and I think it's needed there in the back of the building, and stands on its own merit, so I'm in support.
Thank you, and I too am in support, and I think to Mr. Lionel's point of not even realizing the business was there, there certainly appears to be a need for this sign. Would somebody care to make a motion? Mr. Lionel, thank you.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion on behalf of the owner, Scup Realty LLC, the applicant is Falsetti Pianos LLC, address 323 Daniel Webster Highway, Sheet A, Lot 384, requesting variance from land use code Section 190-108(c)(2) to exceed maximum wall sign area, 75 square feet allowed, 104 square feet proposed. This is in the HB Zone Ward 7. The board finds that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, trying to have people identify where the property is, where the entrance is, given the special conditions of the property. This is a very confusing building, with the entrance in the back, and no signage there is definitely confusing. So the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue, other than the variance. The board believes this is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance, that it will not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels, it is not contrary to public interest, and substantial justice will be served, so I make a motion to approve this area variance.
Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Boucher.
Sorry, who was the second on that?
Mr. Boucher.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Knakis, how do you vote?
Mr. Knakis votes in favor.
Mr. Lionel, how do you vote?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
And myself, Mariel McKay, I also vote in favor. That is five to zero. Congratulations, you have been granted your variance. As we have stated earlier, anyone has the opportunity to challenge any decision made by this board, they have 30 days with which to do so. Should you have any comments, questions, concerns, please re-refer to Mr. Falk or Ms. Poirier. Thank you for your presentation, and again, congratulations. Are we all good to continue? Mr. Minkara, you will be voting in this case. Martin A. Santos Lantigua and Elizabeth O'Valley, and please forgive me if I've crucified the names, that's not my intent, owners, 33 Locke Street, Sheet 43, Lot 88, requesting the following: variance from land use code Section 190-16, Table 16-3 for minimum land area, 19 for four square feet existing, and 6,970 square feet required. And two, variance from land use code Section 190-198, Table 198-1, Number 6, for minimum parking, three spaces existing, four spaces required, to convert a single-family home with an approved accessory dwelling unit to a two-family dwelling. This is in the RC Zone Ward 3. Is there somebody here to present this application?
Yes, we are. We're in the Zoom.
Okay, you, if you would please state your name and address for the record, and then you will have up to 15 minutes to present your case.
Okay. I am the interpreter for, go ahead.
Martin Santos Lantigua.
Elizabeth O'Valley.
And my name is Adalina Reyes Hernandez. The reason why we...
The address, please.
33 Locke Street.
The reason why we requesting the variance is, right now, the house is approved as a single-family with an in-lot unit, with the owner occupied, and three parking space, and what we are looking for is everything to stay the same, but to be approved as a two-unit with the same parking space without the owner occupied.
Is that the extent of the presentation, or that is this all that you have to say?
Correct, because everything is gonna stay the same. Right now, it's just that the, the single home is considered as a...
So, your statement is, it's a single-family currently?
Unit, the same.
I have questions, but, does anybody on the board have any questions for these applicant? Mr. Lionel, then Mr. Courier.
Okay, I have lots of questions. Okay, so, how long, and obviously, you're gonna be interpreting what I say, how long have the current owners owned this property, and how was it presented to them in terms of number of units when they bought it?
Mr. Lionel, I think we lost them.
We can't hear them. They're not on anymore.
We lost them.
They might be hopefully trying to log back in.
Okay.
I thought I saw them. Isn't that her?
They were there, but they, they're not on Zoom anymore. Maybe they lost their connection and trying to get back on.
Yeah, this is Mr. Courier, and the last bit of their speech dropped off, and I'm just confirming that they dropped off of Zoom altogether just a moment ago.
Was that the interpreter?
No, I saw the whole thing. Maybe we could move on to the next case, and then see if they return.
Yeah.
So, I'm gonna have to continue this case?
Yeah.
Okay, this case will be continued until such time as they hopefully can log back We're going to move on to case number five. David L. and Sarah H. Hall owners, 54 Robin Hood Road, Sheet B, Lot 1527, requesting variance from land use code Section 190-17E1 to exceed maximum driveway width, 23 feet existing, 24 feet permitted, up to an additional nine feet proposed on left side of driveway, for a total width of 32 feet. This is in the R9 Zone Ward 9. Is somebody here to present this application?
On Zoom.
Yes, I'm here on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. Would you please state your name and address for the record, and then you will have up to 15 minutes to present the case, and, Mr. Knakis, you will be the voting member on this case.
Sure. Hi, Board, my name is Sarah Hall, and I've lived at 54 Robin Hood Road for the past 20 years. We've put in an application to extend our driveway, because the children we had have now grown to a driving age. We're looking to be able to add a little more space to our current parking situation, so that we can put a car that won't block the access to the garage, so that we don't have to keep cars on the street during the day, or move them around a lot in the early evenings or in the mornings. There are other similar properties in our area, for houses that are also positioned very close to the road, so it would fit in with the current neighborhood. We did speak to all of our neighbors, and they're very comfortable with us moving forward with this application. We also spoke to Mark Jennings, just to make sure we understood the process, and if a permit was required. Think that's basically the whole case. Yeah, that's it, really, so we just wanna make the driveway one spot wider. Our house is particularly close to the street, you can, it is literally only the length of one car back off of the road.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for the, Mr. Courier?
Just wondering, Ms. Hall, like you mentioned, you've lived there 20 years, has the garage always been there in that location?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, that was the only question I had. I'm off to that.
Yeah, the city owns all the way up to the basketball hoop. There's a really large setback for some reason on that, this area. It's like 17 feet from the street, I think, but, so we don't pay taxes on all of that, which is brilliant.
Does anybody else on the board have any questions for the applicant? I don't see any. We do have two emails, letters in support, which I will read into the record. Dear zoning board members, we share a property line with the Hall family. They spoke to us about... They spoke to us about their desire to expand their driveway, and we are happy to support their application for a variance to expand their driveway eight feet beyond the twenty-four-foot maximum. We think it will help their lack of parking and do not have any concerns of it negatively impacting the flow of traffic or the character of our neighborhood. And this is signed sincerely, Steve and Carissa Martin at 28 Glen Drive Road in Nashua. The next letter states, dear zoning board members, we live directly across the street from the Hall family. They spoke to us about their desire to expand their driveway, and we are happy to support their application for a variance to expand their driveway eight feet beyond the twenty-four-foot maximum. We think it will help their lack of parking and do not have any concerns of it negatively impacting the flow of traffic or the character of our neighborhood. And this is signed sincerely, Paul and Lynn Willett at 55 Robin Hood Road. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak with questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application? Is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to speak with questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to the application? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Lionel.
I'm in support of the application. This is a rather peculiarly shaped lot. The, the house is placed at an angle very close to the property line, and I think that their proposal is consistent with, with what's reasonable.
Thank you. Mr. Courier.
I'm in support for the same reasons stated by Mr. Lionel.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher.
I'm also in support of the application, and I, I just make a comment that, that property is aesthetically very pleasing to look at. So I'm sure whatever they do will look great.
Thank you.
Mr. Canakis.
I'm also in support for the reasons already stated.
Thank you. Mr. Minkara.
I'm also in support for the reasons stated.
Okay, I'm also in support. Um, would somebody care to make a motion?
Just for clarification, which of us are voting?
For clarification, this is Mr. Canakis. Mr. Boucher, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the area variance for David L. and Sarah H. Hall, owners of 54 Robin Hood Road, Sheet B, Lot 1527. Requesting a variance from land use code section 190-17, section E subsection one, to exceed a maximum driveway width, twenty-three feet existing, twenty-four feet permitted, up to an additional nine feet proposed on the left side of the driveway for a total width of thirty-two feet. It's in the R9 Zone Ward Nine. We find that the variance is needed to enable applicants to use the property given the special conditions of the property. Again, corner lot, house sits at, at, at an angle, and, um, the, uh, again, the garage is very close to the actual property line. We find that the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. We find that it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We find that it will not adversely affect property values of surrounding parcels. We find that it's not contrary to public interest, and we find that substantial justice will be served. So again, I make a motion to approve the area variance.
Thank you, Mr. Canakis, for your second. Mr. Lionel, how do you vote?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Canakis, how do you vote?
Mr. Canakis votes in favor.
And myself, Marielle McKay, I also vote in favor. Ms. Hall, congratulations, your variance has been granted. As we've stated this evening, anyone from the public may challenge any decision made by this board. They have thirty days with which to do so. Should you have any questions, comments, concerns, please re-refer back to either Mr. Falk or Ms. Poirier in the Planning Department. Other than that, congratulations, and thank you for your presentation this evening.
Thank you.
Is that? The...
Case number five.
Yes.
Now I'll go back to case four.
We're gonna go back and revisit case four, and we are going to continue with Mr. Lionel, who started to ask questions.
Yes.
And again, Mr. Minkara, this is you, sir, who is voting in this case.
Okay. Can, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Fine. My, my first question was, when did the current owners buy this property? And when they bought it, was it represented to them as a, as a one-unit or a two-unit property?
It was present as a two-unit.
Is the, the second unit, when this, the ADU came before us in October of 2020, the description was that the ADU was going to be in the basement. And one of the, you know, the rules for, for ADUs is that there is a, an interior door, that there's no separate front entrance. Is the second unit gonna be that basement unit? And where is the entrance for it?
It's in there. Yeah, the, it's the basement as the second unit, and basically has the same entrance to the other apartment. So that, the way that it was approved before, everything stays the same. They have their own separate entrance, and then the other unit has their own separate entrance too.
I see. That's, that's all I have for now.
Mr. Courier, you had your hand up.
Yes, um, my question for the applicant is, it looks like the driveway is about forty feet long. So I, I just wonder if I, if they could clarify, how long is, is the driveway?
The driveway, you can fit three cars parking.
Okay, I was just wondering, 'cause the, the, the plan we have shows the driveway to be about forty feet. And when I looked at the property, it looks to me like maybe two cars could fit on it at most. The typical driveway is considered nine by, by twenty. So two cars would be nine by forty, and three would be like a nine by sixty. But I'm seeing about forty feet, and I, I guess, maybe it's, maybe this is an opinion or an observation versus a question, but I, I find it challenging to fit three cars in a, in a forty-foot driveway. So I guess maybe it's just my observation versus a question, but, uh, just, that's what I see anyway. So I guess it's not a question, it's just what I see. So I guess, I guess I'm all set, no questions, and...
Thank you. Mr. Minkara.
So if I understand correctly, the, the current owners live at 18 Caldwell Road. May I ask, who is currently living on the property? And are both of the units occupied?
Yes, both of them are occupied right now. And yes, the owner lives at 18 Caldwell Street Road.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions? I have a question. Uh, Mr. Falk?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just for the parking, while it's true a parking space is nine by twenty, we've seen several photographs throughout the years that three, three cars have parked in that space. So we've just really given them the benefit of, of having three existing spaces. It's a, it's a small lot, it's a non-conforming lot. You know, this was built, you know, before zoning codes came into existence, so it's just an existing situation where they can fit three cars. But they're all in tandem.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Falk. My question is this. You stated that, and the door has to be for an ADU accessible through the, the main unit. You stated they're separate, and they have separate entrances. How do you enter? I mean, if you enter through only one front door, where is the other door located? And is it in a hallway? Is it in the room of the first unit? Is it private?
It's in the hallway, but it's private.
Okay. And are either of the residents now related to the owner?
No, they're not related.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board? Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the application on Zoom? Is there anyone here who would like to speak with questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application? Would you please come forward, state your name and address for the record?
Good evening, my name is Cindy Goodman. I live at 31 Lock Street. Our house abuts their driveway. When, two years ago, when they asked for the variance to add an in-law apartment, we had no problem with it because the gentleman who had owned the house at that time had medical issues, and they were granted the variance for the in-law apartment. As of right now, I only know of one person who's living in that house. It's a young gentleman. The problem is, we are in the process right now of actually hiring a surveyor to prop, to properly survey our lot because I believe part of their driveway is our property. About a, according to our deed that we have, it says it's a foot over into their driveway. So we are opposing the variant to make it a two-family because of that. And the driveway is so narrow that they cannot get out of both doors. If they, if they have a passenger in their car, they have to let the passenger out on the street in order for them to get out of the car because our houses are, our houses are just so close. So that's why we are opposing this. And I did send a, an email opposing it.
I have it. I see it. But you're here, so I won't have to read this into the record.
I mean, our concern was, like I said, we're, we're in the process of hiring a surveyor to get our land properly surveyed because we're in the process of putting up a fence for our dogs, and we wanna make sure we put it on our right property line. And we believe, according to the deed that I have a copy of, that it says it's a foot over into that lot. So I just wanna have it properly surveyed. That's why we are in, in opposing of the variance.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anyone have any questions? No, no one has any questions. I'm gonna... Did you also want to speak, sir? I had a feeling, but we're gonna be fair here. Okay, um, the applicant, and I don't know how you would respond to that, but you have the opportunity to respond to that.
We are aware that there is like one foot to the property, so we are aware of that. But like we stated before, everything is gonna be the same as it is. Nothing has changed. It's just that, instead of having the owner to occupy, it's just that he's gonna have it as a two-unit. But we are aware of that, of that, that one foot that she mentioned regarding the property.
Thank you. At this point...
She could come back if she wants to.
If you wanted to, Mrs. Goodman, you could come back, or you don't have to. I mean, and if you're gonna respond, please come to the microphone because we're being recorded. State your name, sir, and your address.
My name is Jerry Goodman, I live at 31 Lock Street. If we look at the deed and stuff that, that she pulled from City Hall, the end of the driveway, they're actually parking on our property. So there's no possible way they can get three cars in there. If we did decide to put up a fence on our property, they literally have no driveway now at all. Because they cannot get a car in between their house and our property line. I don't think there's ten feet in there between the two houses. So that's the only concern I have. I have concerns about them coming in and not, you know, just beating up the side of the house.
Right, but that we can only, we're now locked into just that one inch, and they did admit an awareness of the one-foot overage. Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm going to now close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Minkara.
I, I, I can't find support for, for this application. I, I, I haven't heard any reason other than a desire to not live on the premises that would justify granting the variance. There's nothing inherent in the property, you know, that would distinguish it from, from any other. It's a very small property. In fact, I suppose if anything, if there are any distinguishing features, they speak against granting the variance. The departure in square footage requested between a, um, single-family home and, and a two-family home is also quite significant. accessory dwelling units by their very nature are considered to be a single-family home. We treat them as a single-family home in every other way. They meet the lot size requirements and the setbacks, et cetera, of a single-family home. And, and part of the reason for that is just because there is an owner occupant on the site. So for example, with three tandem parking spaces, presumably, if the owner's living on the site, you can figure it out. With two units that are unrelated, I don't see how tandem parking works. That, that is gonna be a continued problem and a continued conflict. So I can't support the application because of the extent of the deviation and, or, or the extent of the variance requested, and I can't support the application because I, I don't believe, even with three spaces, I don't believe three tandem spaces are adequate. And it may appear that they don't have three spaces, which would again be significant deviation.
And I have a question before I ask another member of the board. And I don't know in honesty and truth whether it belongs to you, Mr. Minkara, or you, Mr. Falk, or both of you may be able to answer this. With the one-foot disputed land area, how or was that mentioned? Was that even included? I mean, now we've found out this information. What would the city do? I mean, should this come back? The deed states one thing, that everybody is aware that it's one foot less. Is that impactful in this application?
Well, Madam Chair, I had never heard of that one-foot space on the side of the yard until just a few minutes ago. One possible action could be maybe to table this pending the outcome of that survey. I don't know if it, I don't know how helpful that would be to you. I mean, if it's about nine or so feet wide, if it's less than that now by a foot, who knows if it's, who knows if it's a foot and a half? We heard it's about a foot. So it may be close to two feet, it may be just a few inches. So it might not be a bad idea to wait and see what the results are of that survey. That might be helpful to know. Just a, just a thought.
Madam Chair, if I could, I could follow up?
Yes, please.
That would make no difference to me, even with...
That was gonna be my question.
Yeah, I mean, even if they have the additional footage... I can't support the application because I don't believe that three tandem parking spaces are, are adequate. So this, that difference of the footer, a foot and a half doesn't matter, in my view.
Correct. And I think where you went with that was a familial response made it different because when it's family, you can negotiate.
Right.
But when it's not, there is really less room for negotiation. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Canakis.
I, I agree with those points. Um, and to add to that, it was marketed as a, a single-family with a bonus in-law apartment, not a, a two-family, just, so it seems like more of a desire than a need at this point. So I can't find support.
Thank you. Mr. Lyonell.
I am also not in support of this application. I don't believe this is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. The, uh, an ADU is necessarily less of a burden on, on the property than a two-family is. And it's not just the parking. The parking is certainly a, a part of the problem. But I don't see anything, uh, unique about this property that, uh, makes it necessary or, uh, justifiable to convert it from a single-family to a two-family.
Thank you. Mr. Courier.
Well, I, I, not finding support for the, the reasons already stated. I, I, I did want to say that when the other gentleman came in a short while ago, to me, the in-law was, the ADU, to me, in that small property was a tight squeeze. I almost felt it was more appropriate that, that the gentleman go for the handicap exempt, exemption. But, you know, the application was, was already prepared and I, and I, you know, I think it barely met it on its own criteria for the ADU. But as, as Mr. Minkar says, this is a very large overage request and it has some history here. It doesn't seem to jive well with the neighborhood and it's overly crowded. So I, I can't find support for it either.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher.
Um, I, I also can't find support for the application. I, I was one of the ones that supported, um, the ADU, uh, the in-law apartment when it first came to us. Um, but as Mr. Minkar says, I think there's just too much here, uh, that I can't find support for it.
Thank you. And myself, I am also not in support of this application for all the aforementioned reasons, but I, um, I question this. We granted something for an ADU. One of the rules and regs says the owner has to live there, has to be owner occupied. Not only is it not owner occupied, none of the people that live there are related to the owner. And so to me, that would, I assume, violate
No, it doesn't anymore.
It doesn't anymore? Well, it did when we first put this through.
No, wait, 2017 changed, so there's no longer a familiar requirement.
Why is it still, well, it's, okay.
It used to be a requirement.
Excuse me?
It used to be a requirement. It's not anymore.
But, all right. Regardless.
Point of clarification, we, we still require that one of the units be occupied by the owner.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
But, and one of the units is not occupied by the owner. That was my whole point. Um, so that to me is like we granted something based on the information that was presented to us. And the information that is in evidence today is absolutely, um, not what we were told. So for that reason, for every other reason that was mentioned, I too am not in support of this application.
Uh, Ms. McKay?
Yes, sir. Mr. Courier.
Uh, I just had one other thing. Um, you know, I, I certainly empathize with, apparently the property was marketed as a two-family. Uh, you know, but I, I don't feel that that's a hardship at all with the property itself. That's something not associated with the property itself. It sounds like it was misadvertised. And, and while that's a hardship for the applicant, it's, I don't find it as a hardship in a property that, that warrants a variance. And I just wanted to have that on record also.
Thank you. That, that does sound like a Well, it We've happened, we closed the public hearing. We have the public meeting. Um, I suppose at the discretion of the chair, we could at, you know, see what her question is. And, um, would that be, uh, would it be germane to the situation we're in now to listen or not listen to the question that we see the hand raised from the applicant? And I'll put it to the board. Do you want to hear what the applicant has to say or not?
I, I mean, I, I don't know. That don't make a difference to me.
Okay, it may not, it probably doesn't. I'm sorry, at this point, um, we are deliberating on how we are going to vote on this issue. And so the time for questions has passed. Um, it's, at this point, I don't think gonna change the outcome. Um, would somebody care to make a motion? Mr. Lyonell.
Make a motion, uh, on behalf of owner Martin A. Santos Lantigua and Elizabeth Oval, uh, address 33 Lock Street, Sheet 43 Lot 88, requesting the following. Variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, for minimum land area, 1,944 square feet existing, 6,970 feet, square feet required, and two variance from Land Use Code Section 190-198, Table 198-1, number six, for minimum parking, three spaces existing, four spaces required to convert a single-family home with approved accessory dwelling unit to a two-family dwelling in the RC Zone Ward 3. Uh, the board finds that this variance, uh, may be needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, but that there are no special conditions to the property, um, and that the benefit sought, uh, by the applicant, uh, is, is not reasonable. Uh, the, the board finds this is not within the spirit and intent of the ordinance, um, that it will, uh, likely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. Um, we haven't made a determination about contrary to public interest. Uh, substantial justice to the applicant would be served. However, uh, because this does not meet all of the five points of law, I make a motion to deny this area variance.
Do I have a, I'll second that. Mr. Minkar, how do you vote?
Mr. Minkar votes in favor of the motion to deny.
Mr. Lyonell, how do you vote?
Mr. Lyonell votes in favor of the motion to deny.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor of the motion to deny.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor of the motion to deny.
And myself, Maryelle McKay, I also vote in favor of the motion to deny. Your motion for, or your request for an area variance has been denied. Um, should you have any questions, I would ask that you re-refer back to Mr. Falk or Ms. Courier in the Planning Department. And and as with any decision this board has made, the public has 30 days which, with, to, um, challenge any decision. Yes, Mr. Canakis.
Did that cover the parking variance as well?
It was part of the motion. We, we denied both, denied both variances.
Yeah. I, okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to throw out, the, the request is, on the record here, is for request one and two both together.
Yeah.
By Mr. Lyonell.
Yeah. And again, that's how I understood that. I just want to be clear that the board, when they voted, understood the same thing. Mr. Minkar understood that. Mr. Boucher, did you also understand that?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, thank you then. We have that clarified. Thank you, Mr. Canakis, for raising it. Thank you for presenting the application. Should you have questions, please re-refer back into the Planning Department. But at this point, the variance, both variances have been denied. Sylvia A. and Kenneth I. Jelly owners, 130 Pine Street, Sheet 96, Lot 121, requesting variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, for minimum land area, 3,293 square feet, existing 6,970 square feet required to convert a single-family home into a two-family home. This is the RC Zone Ward 6. Is there somebody here to present this case? Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Yes, uh, my name is Steve Richard. I'm the new owner of 130 Pine Street. Um, and, uh, thank you for your time. Nobody wanted to stay for mine. I'm not sure why. So, uh, I purchased the property on April 25th from Ken Jelly. Uh, Ken was a tenant on the first floor as a child and basically was raised there. Um, and eventually, as the people on the second floor, uh, passed away, they eventually purchased, uh, the property. And, um, uh, some, many years back, uh, Ken's mother passed away and the property's been vacant for about 13 years. So I just wanted to give you a little, a little bit of background on that. I did know it was a single-family when I bought it. I, uh, I am a real estate investor. I do own other properties across the state, and so I do a lot of due diligence on the front end. Um, and as I walked the property, it became very clear that, you know, it was at one time a, a two-family property. And we'll talk a little bit about that. We actually, in working with Ken, we completed the, uh, application together. Um, and, uh, you know, he was the one that kind of gave me the background of, you know, being a tenant and then eventually owning it. And then they were gonna rent it on the second floor. They never got around to finishing the second floor and kind of, you know, making it pretty again. And so it just became a workshop with a ton of tools and, and, you know, things and, uh, you know what it is to live in a property for 20 or 30 years. All the stuff just collects and boxes and everything else. So, so we completed the application. We submitted that. Um, I did take the time to provide a PDF with pictures that I think would be really helpful. Yes, thank you. And I just, uh, just, you know, briefly go through this. Uh, you know, reasons why I think it's, it's already a two-family, you know, from a structure perspective, from a flow perspective, from a security perspective. We've got three doors, three entrances, uh, front, middle, and back. Two of the three already have common areas. In those common areas, there are locked doors on both floors already. Um, uh, and so I provided some pictures for that. And as you look to the, you know, next to the, the middle door, there are already two electrical meters that are there, one of them being vacant. Again, just kind of clearly showing that, you know, this was a two-family at one time. Um, in the basement, you can see the two electrical panels. You, you probably can't see it on there, but, you know, it's got downstairs and upstairs, downstairs on the left, upstairs on the right. You can see they're kind of daisy-chained. When they went from a, a two-family, and I, I think this happened somewhere around 1990, 1991, just kind of doing my, my research, I think somewhere there must have been when it went from, you know, I guess, a two-family back to a single-family per the city. Um, and then just looking on that last page, uh, you know, as a comparison to the property next door at 128 Pine Street, uh, these structures are the same building, um, essentially from, you know, from the origin. Um, and even just, again, I took some screenshots of Zillow. Um, you know, my property actually is, you know, 28, 31, 100 square feet. Lots of room in there. And, uh, actually a beautiful property. And I, we're, if, if given permission, you know, I think will make for some very nice, um, accommodations for the residents of New Hampshire. Um, I will not be living there. These are, these would be rental properties for me. As I think about, um, uh, the neighborhood and I think about, uh, the other properties, you know, it's already a multifamily, uh, area. You know, all the properties around are two families and three families. And I think about, you know, uh, you know, would it add a different, additional traffic to that area? Would it cause any safety issues to the community? You know, is it fundamentally changing the neighborhood from what it is currently? Obviously, I'm, we're not doing anything to the outside. We're just gonna make the inside look pretty again. Um, you know, put in a, a, you know, I guess, kind of light up that second electrical meter and, um, and turn those into what I think would be, you know, welcomed, two additional rental units for the city in Ashwa. I do have two parking spots in the driveway today. Um, I've got two additional parking spots from 128 Pine Street. Uh, they're a nice French-Canadian family. It doesn't hurt that I'm French-Canadian, speak French myself. So maybe that helped a little bit. I don't know. Uh, but, um, you know, I provided the, um, you know, the rental agreement, um, uh, you know, just to document that. I do want to enter into the record, just, you know, nothing definitive, but there may be a point in time where I come back before the board and, um, uh, as a, as a long-term solution, I may look to expand the driveway. Uh, not, I'm not presenting that today. Uh, today I've got, you know, two spots to park and two spots directly next door in an oversized driveway. Um, but at some point, I may come before the board and, um, look to expand the current driveway and, and request, you know, approvals for that. Um, let me just kind of look at my notes here. As a company, Rockport Properties, we, um, I've got, um, long-term rental units in Manchester as well. I tend to, uh, service, I would say, or support, you know, lower-income Section 8, uh, residents. I am very, um, safety-conscious. Uh, so as part of, you know, a lot of folks that are in the real estate business, uh, I guess you could say a lot of folks can cut corners, probably in any industry, right? So that's not me as a company. Everything we do, um, I'm thinking about, if I can't put mom in the unit, you know, the unit's not ready. It doesn't have to be the Taj Mahal, but it's got to be good, you know, safe, um, living. You know, as, as, I guess, just to provide some documentation, um, you know, even with the handling of testing for asbestos and things like that, right? So I went ahead and, and brought in a, um, a third-party licensed abatement company with the state, licensed with the state as well, to do testing and then whatever they find for asbestos there, they'll do the abatement to remove that. So I'm also very, I look at these properties as long-term. These are long-term properties for me and I want to, I try and do things right on the front end. Um, I look to build good relationships with whatever city or town that I'm in. I don't look to subvert, um, you know, the city, but really work with the city and hopefully provide what I think would be a, a service and a, uh, a good thing for the city as a whole. Um, let me just kind of look at my notes here to see if there was anything else. Yeah. I think that's it. Thank you for your time and, um, I'll take any questions.
Mr. Minkar.
So was there ever a, a physical conversion, uh, of the second unit, uh, to turn this back into a single, or turn this into a single-family home? Or was it simply that the second unit fell into disuse?
Uh, it, per the owner, Ken Jelly, it's the second unit fell into disuse. So he was a young boy, uh, was raised there. Um, and, uh, as I stated, um, at some point, again, I know the story because we, I guess we became friends. His father lost his job, uh, working at a local, uh, manufacturing plant. Um, and then, uh, his health declined shortly after that. Uh, he, uh, when they bought it, they were going to, um, update and convert that second floor. Either time or finances, uh, to convert. It was never done. And so the fir, the second floor unit looks just like the cer, uh, the first floor, um, and they are separate, right? So even, that's why I provided some pictures, just to show the, the common area. So even, that's why I provided some pictures, just to show the, the common area, right? So if this is one house, you don't have two common areas with locked doors on the second floor and on the first floor, for security reasons. And so, I think it just fell into disuse. You know, his, his mom was in, of age, and when she passed, I think for, you know, probably emotional reasons, just held on to the property for a long time.
So is there still physical evidence of a bathroom and kitchen up there?
Yes, the plumbing is there. The plumbing is there.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Mr. Canakis?
Can you give some more details on the parking arrangement with the neighbor? Is that just arm's length, or do you have a lease for the spots?
Yeah, it's, as you can see, I think I, I didn't, hopefully you got a copy of it, but it is essentially a, a month-to-month. The owners, Bertrand and Julie, you know, provided month-to-month parking for, for two spots there.
We did get that. I saw that. Oh, oh, here it is, yes, this letter here.
Yes, yeah.
We have it. Mr. Courier, you had your hand up to ask a question.
Yeah, I just, maybe I missed this, but how many bedrooms are proposed, or if this were approved, would be in the bottom unit, and how many in the top unit?
Yeah, great question. So on the bottom unit, there will be three bedrooms, and on the second floor, there will be three or four bedrooms. There's a room that I guess would be a large office or a small bedroom, so we're kind of debating on what we do with that. Up on the third floor, the attic, there are actually two bedrooms up there. There's no electricity, there's no plumbing, and so it's our intention to simply lock and close that off. I'm not dealing with that, I'm not putting the money into it. I don't think that would add any value. Plus, the stairway is about this big, and nobody here would approve it. I already know that, so I'm not even going to, going to bother with it. So to answer your question, three in the first, three or four bedrooms on the second?
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Did you have any questions, Mr. Lionel?
Just a brief question, so I see that you have contracted to get it tested for asbestos. Are you also going to get it tested for lead paint?
I'm not obligated to, so there's no lead ordinance on it, and so we will, we're treating it, any property that's prior to nineteen seventy-eight, we're treating it with the assumption that there is, because in Nashua and Manchester, you know, they all are, right? So, but there's no ordinance against it, there's no law saying that I have to do anything other than, we're, we're cleaning it out, if there's asbestos, we're going to remove it, we'll get the report back from Alpha, and take care of whatever's there. So in this case, it will be, there'll be no chip paint, it'll all be painted over, it'll all be safe.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
No further questions.
Of course.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
There's no one here, so no one's going to be able to speak in support. There's no one on Zoom.
Somebody called in, I don't know who that is. That telephone entry, do you know anybody?
Nobody there.
Okay.
Okay, so there's no one to speak in favor, there is nobody present to speak in opposition comments, questions, or concerns, so I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Courier?
Well, I guess, you know, I certainly appreciate the applicant's due diligence that he's done here. I do think the parking spaces are a worthy addition, but they're not really in any way tied to the property and aren't memorialized in any way. You know, so I, there is a, it does appear to me that it was a two-family back in the day. I mean, to me, the evidence is there. The, the overage request is, is pretty high. I, I guess I'm kind of on the fence with this, and I would value hearing the other opinions, because I'm on the fence.
Mr. Boucher?
I'm in general support, I'm in favor of the application for a couple of reasons. Again, I think there is significant evidence that this was a two-family. I think we've seen in the past where some of these homes have been converted back to single-family, I think for some time, some reason, just tax purposes.
Right.
I think we've seen that in, in the past. But I do believe exactly what the applicant is, has testified to, it seems clear. And as far as the parking goes, it's clear to me that there's plenty of parking on that property, so if there's ever an issue with parking next door, the applicant stated that, that, that he would expand the driveway. So, in, in this particular case, this driveway definitely will have space for the, for the minimum amount of vehicles that are, that need to park in a two-family. Again, Pine Street in this part of, of town, obviously is, you know, is more compact, predates a lot of zoning, right? But again, in this case, it's clear to me that this is a two-family. We've got, we've got two-family, a lot of two-family next door, you know, obviously more area for parking, but I think it fits in, I, I think it was there, I think it was used as that, and I think there's going to be no, nothing to me be a detriment to the neighborhood of the area, so I'm going to support the application.
Thank you. Mr. Mincara?
I also support the application. I, I think I struggled initially because of the size of the deviation, but I'm convinced based on the evidence that was provided that this was a, a two-family dwelling. It does not appear that it was ever converted to a single-family, it was just that the second unit fell in disuse for a number of years. Two-family and multifamily dwellings are clearly consistent with the character of the area, and, and I really don't know that, you know, twenty-eight hundred square foot plus single-family home is, is a viable use for this and would justify the investment necessary. So I support the application.
Thank you. Mr. Canakis?
I don't think I have anything else to add, I'm also in support.
Mr. Lionel?
I'm also in support, I believe this is consistent with the neighborhood. As Mr. Mincara said, there is ample evidence that this was a two-family. It is very similar to the house next door that is, is a two-family, and it's, I, I see no reason to object.
Thank you. I too am in support, and the irony for me here is that the home I live in was a two-family, and when my mother-in-law took ill, we, we converted back to one family, but the similarities are the electric, the electric meters, we still have two, and we, the circuit breakers, still have up and down, because they were separate units. And when, in conversation with the city, the city and the electric company, everybody just said, "Leave it, it's just easier." So I get two bills, floor one, floor two, and that's just the way it is, but, so I knew when I looked at the pictures exactly what happened, because I lived it. I, I too am in support of this, there's lots of reasons to do, I know the area well. I visit, you know, a local restaurant on that street, and I, I see it often. So yes, I'm in support of this, is in keeping and in character. Would somebody care to make a motion? Mr. Boucher, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the area variance for Sylvia A. and Kenneth I. Jelly, owners of one thirty Pine Street, sheet ninety-six, lot one twenty-one, requesting a variance from land use code section one ninety dash sixteen, table sixteen dash three, for minimum land area, three thousand two hundred and ninety-three square feet existing, six thousand nine hundred and seventy square feet required to convert a single-family home into a two-family home, in the RC Zone Ward Six. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. Again, clearly through testimony and evidence that we, that we, that we received, that this was all along a two-family home. We find that the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue, other than the variance. We find that this, it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We find it will not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. We find that's not contrary to public interest, and we find a substantial justice would be served. So again, I make a motion to approve the area variance.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Lionel, for your second. Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor. Hold on, oh, yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Courier votes in favor of the application, I thought I was muted.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Mincara?
Mr. Mincara votes in favor.
Mr. Lionel?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
And myself, Maryelle McKay, I also vote in favor. Congratulations, Mr. Richard, your variance has been approved. As we've said all evening, any member of the public has a right to challenge any decision made by this board. You have thirty days, or they have thirty days with which to do so. Should you have any questions, comments, concerns, please re-refer back to Mr. Falk or Ms. Poirier in the Planning Department. Thank you for your presentation this evening, it was very complete, and again, congratulations, and have a good evening. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on with the business of the meeting. Votions for rehearing. Everyone saw the upcoming agenda, I'm assuming. Does anyone see any regional impact?
I do not.
Mr. Courier does not.
Mr. Boucher, Mr. Canakis?
No, no.
No regional impact is seen. We have no minutes with which to approve, so unless I hear something to the contrary.
Can I chime in a second? It's been a while since I've been on Zoom, but the audio and video is improved, especially the video, it follows the folks who are speaking, so the game has been improved since the last time I zoomed in.
The audio's been improved too, we can now hear from the speaker, and I could clearly hear the people on Zoom.
I agree.
Yeah, it's, it's very, very different, it's much improved.
Somebody, somebody did something even without testing.
Yeah. Well, then, I, unless there's an objection, I will adjourn the meeting at eight thirteen PM. Thank you.
That works.
And it works.
There you go.
Good night.
Good night.